Call the meeting to order now that the clock is up. When we know what time it is, it's time to start our meeting. I want to welcome everybody here. We've got a number of things on the agenda. But first of all, I'd like to call on Counselor Susan Penner to bring the opening, please.
Thank you. Good evening. The Canada Summer Jobs Program has been in the headlines recently due to the Liberal Government's insistence that in order to qualify, organizations had to sign an attestation to vouch that their organization's mandate respects human rights and charter values, including reproductive rights and the right to be free from discrimination on the basis of sex, religion, race, national or ethnic origin, color, mental or physical disability, sexual orientation, or gender identity or expression. The primary concern for faith-based organizations was that by signing the attestation as written, they would be agreeing with the Liberal Government's aggressive pro-abortion mandate. When the inclusion of the attestation was brought up in the Senate last week, Senator Harder said, "Again, as the government has made clear, what is being dealt with in the Summer Jobs Program is to provide the assurance that the core funding being given by the Government of Canada is not to support activities which are in counterpoint to the views of the government and the policies and laws of Canada." Last time I checked, the job of a democratically-elected government is not to impose its views on the people, but provide people the safety to have their own views. The attestation is worded in a way that acts as if abortion is a charter value, which it is not. But what I can't figure out is why the government is so passionate about abortion. Passionate to the degree that it does not allow pro-life MPs, will not allow a pro-life woman to sit as chair of the Status of Women Committee, and will not allow organizations that do good work in our communities to receive funding if they value life. What exactly is so threatening about valuing life? What if instead of viewing an unexpected pregnancy as an inconvenience, we viewed it as a gift? What if we marveled at a woman's ability to carry and nurse a child? What if we valued motherhood as much as we value education and a career? What if we stopped trying to convince women that an abortion is a routine procedure with no emotional or physical side effects? I used to volunteer at a pregnancy crisis and care center, and I can assure you that the emotional consequences of abortions are significant and life-changing. A woman's body is not just an incubator or a machine to grow a baby without any emotional attachment to that baby, no matter how much the government wishes that were so. The strong emotional attachment between a mother and baby is exactly why so many pregnant women that were planning to give their babies up for adoption changed their minds, because they are emotionally attached to the baby that has been growing inside of them. Breaking that attachment at any stage of pregnancy is a traumatic loss, not a routine procedure. There is a beautiful story coming out of Tignesh PEI, population 700. A single mother gave birth to triplets in early January, and the community is stepping up to help. One volunteer said, "I don't see this as a chore in any way. For me, it is a gift to come here." So while the Liberal Government is doing what it can to squeeze out anyone and anything that is in counterpoint to its views on abortion, volunteers in Tignesh PEI are proving that there are still those that recognize life as a gift, even if it is unexpected.
Thank you, Counselor Penner. We have the agenda in front of us, and I'd like an adoption of the agenda, please. Can I have a motion? Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Funk. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. We have the minutes from February 6th of a regular council meeting on page one. You've all had a chance to review these already. Can I have a motion to approve these, please? Counselor Swagstra, moved by Counselor Swagstra, seconded by Counselor Siemens. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. There's no business arising from the minutes, so we'll move on now to... We'll now start the public hearing process. This is for Goldmark Development Incorporated. This is subdivision 4451, 2017-7942. This is the creation of Alexander Way and Imperial Crescent, as well as Acorn Avenue. This is council. This is on page four of your package. You've had a chance to review that. There is also a resolution that wasn't included that I do have if you choose to move forward once we have the public hearing. It is now 7:35, and I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Ms. Dundas, can I get you to introduce this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Before us, we have subdivision file 4451-2017-7942. The owner of the property and applicant of the subdivision is Goldmark Development, Inc. The purpose of the subdivision is to allow the creation of 71 residential lots consisting of RSF (residential single-family lots), RLD (residential low-density lots), and RMD[325.83][325.83](residential medium-density lots), as well as the creation of Alexander Way, Imperial Crescent, and Acorn Avenue. Notices pursuant to the Planning Act have been completed, and there were no registered objections received.
Thank you. Anything further to add? Nothing further to add at this time. Does the applicant wish to speak today? Please take the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening, David Mannen. I'm here for the applicant. Just a couple of things to add. I'll be very brief. This is, as you probably know, Phase III development out on Mackenzie called Lexington Village. First phase was approximately 75 houses. I believe the first two phases that came to you were 50-some lots, which were later subdivided because there were some duplex units. So this is basically the third phase of a multi-phase development. The first two phases were quite successful, and we're hoping for something similar this time around.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you. We may call on you again. Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions on this file? Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? One final time, is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Swagstra?
I'll move approval.
Okay, you move approval of both the application for subdivision as well as the road opening?
Yeah.
Creation of those three roads. Very good, thank you. Is there a seconder? Counselor Siemens, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, I think this is a good application. This would, as was stated, allow for the addition of 71 residential lots and the opening of Imperial Crescent, Alexander Way, Acorn Avenue. It's really quite impressive to see the growth that's been happening in all parts of Steinbach, and this is on the west end of the city, and it is quite impressive to see the new neighbors that are being formed. This is obviously a significant development. There's a variety of zonings here, single-family, low-density, and medium-density, so I think it makes sense to allow for these lots to be created and also for the opening of these new roads.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything further from council? Anything in closing? Counsel, this is obviously a significant development. We have seen the success of it over the last year or two. This again has both multifamily as well as single-family, which are really important. And when talking informally to different realtors and other people in the community, there certainly is a shortage of available lots. And so this will help move that forward and continue to have people move to our city. Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. Thank you. Thank you. All right, now we will move to the delegations, and the first one is 7A, and that, well, we're actually not quite at 7:45. So let's move then to the 8A Secondary Water Supply System Tender Award. This is on page 64 for council. Ms. Dundas, can I get you to introduce this, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council. We have here, it's the Water Supply System Tender Award. The tender for this project closed on January 30th, 2018, with six bids. Recommendation by the project engineer, A.E. Com, is to award the tender to PennCo Construction 2003 Limited in the amount of $11,342,984.22, subject to funding availability. Based on all the components of the project, the estimated cost exceeded the available funding, and this required a review of the recommended bid to identify areas where the scope of work could be reduced and result in a reduction of overall cost. Recommended deletions of $753,791.63 are provided in the attached supplementary schedule, generally consisting of storm sewer piping and concrete resurfacing. Recommendation is also to redirect funding and postpone some anticipated 2018 projects in the amount of $230,000 funded by the city's utility reserve, and to allocate $414,000 of the 2017 utility operating fund surplus to cover the remaining shortfall. With the deletion of the items from the tender, along with the redirection of the utility reserve and utility operating surplus, the anticipated costs of the projects will be funded. Recommendation is to award the tender to PennCo Construction Canada 2003 Limited, being the low bid, and for a reduced scope of work as noted, in the amount of $10,559,192.59.
Thank you. Council, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Fair?
I'll move to award the tender.
Thank you. Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Penner. Go ahead, Counselor Fair.
This is, yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a very large project for the city, and we've got incredible financial support through the Building Canada Fund, and I think it's the largest grant that we've ever received as a city. And so it was very, very hard to walk away, even though it came in over budget, and I'm glad that we found a way to do this without causing our taxpayers a lot of additional pains. We had seen, been very frugal in the last couple of years, since we had some extra money in the utility operating fund. So I think it's a very good project for the city and something we have to do. A while ago, we heard a lot about the water problems, that they had another municipality in the city, and we wanted to try to avert something like that happening here, so...
Thank you. Counselor Penner?
Nothing further.
Okay. Anything further from council? Anything in closing? All right, council, before I call for the question, obviously, this is one of the largest projects. In fact, I think it is the largest project we've ever done as a city. This is significant, and it's going to create a safer water supply for us in the future, and it's also going to allow the ability, allow Steinbach to grow and have increased capacity. The other aspect that's really significant about this is that we have unprecedented funding from other levels of government. To have $5.6 million coming from other levels of government is no small feat on council's part, and obviously, to let that pass by would be an error. And so the work that you've done, as well as administration has done, to bring this within budget, I think is commendable. Obviously, there are a few things that we do have to cut out of the project itself, which will not compromise the quality of the project, and we also will be obviously taking some funds from the surplus of the operating fund from previous years. So this is an important project, and we need to move forward with it. Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. All right. We will now move to the counts payable in the back of the book, 9A. We have, you've all had a chance to review those already. Council, can I have a motion to approve, please? Counselor Siemens, seconded by Counselor Funk. Any discussion?
Nothing further.
Okay. Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. We have 9B, Bylaw 2089. This is third reading in regards to the fire truck, the fire rescue truck. This is on page 77. There is a correction on page 77 if you are following that. It is third reading, not first and second. Can I have someone move third reading, please? Counselor Penner, seconded by Counselor Swagstra. Any discussion?
No, this is an important part of our public safety that we have for the city of Steinbach. It's a rescue truck, and it's very necessary to the safety of the city.
Thank you. Further discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor of third reading. Carried. We have Bylaw, we have 9C, Bylaw 2090. This is on page 86. There are also a motion on there that does need to be corrected to say third reading. How would council like to proceed? Counselor Swagstra?
I'll move approval.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Siemens. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is very straightforward. This is the reconstruction of a portion of Mackenzie Avenue, and the amount that we're being borrowed, which is covering a portion of the cost, is $500,000. And anytime we borrow, it has to go to the municipal board for approval, and they have approved, and so it makes sense to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a note, Mackenzie Avenue is going to be a very busy constructed street this next summer with this intersection being worked on on the first piece of Mackenzie, and then also with the subdivision going in further down Mackenzie. It's going to be a busy piece of, so there will be a lot of averted traffic there, but I think it is important. It's good to see all that construction going on in Steinbach.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Fair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm particularly pleased that we decided to do that in concrete because of the heavy traffic there, so it should stand up very, very well, so...
Yeah, very good. Anything further? Anything closing? Call for the question, all those in favor. Thank you. All right, one final one before we move to the delegations, and that is 9D, the Urban Highway Fund Cost Share Project. This is on page 95. There's a letter there, and there is a resolution on page 96. Does council need any more information from administration before we proceed? Seeing none, council, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Fair. Go ahead.
Yes, this is a continuation of the cost-sharing that we are doing with Manitoba Infrastructure, and these are the concrete pedestrian bands running between, I believe, on Elm Avenue, Main, on William Avenue, Main, and the school crossing on Main Street. So that is important to keep in good condition, and we're very happy we can cost-share with Manitoba Infrastructure on this.
Thank you. Further discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. Thank you. We will now move to the public, sorry, the delegations, and that is 7A. We have Mr. Enz from Pat Porter Active Living Center. Mr. Enz, welcome here. You've brought a few friends?
A few.
Yes, good. I, before we get started, the standard procedure, of course, when someone takes the podium is that you have to state your name and your address, and then it's recorded officially on video as well. So, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Doug Enz. I live at number 1, 581 Main Street, Steinbach, Manitoba, and I am currently the president of Pat Porter Active Living Center. Mayor Gertson, council members, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. Firstly, I would like to thank city council and city staff for their forward thinking in regard to services provided for city residents. The city of Steinbach generously funds programs, services, and facilities that in turn provide top-notch service and activities for residents and guests to the city. From the aquatic center, a new curling rink, to the library arts council, the museum, our resources are the envy of many communities. But one gap in these services is support for seniors. According to the 2016 census, 26% of Steinbach's population is 55 years and over, and 16% are 65 and over, and that equates to 4,085 and 2,545, respectively. Now, this is a large gap that needs to be addressed. Our organization, Serving Seniors Incorporated, and specifically our center, the Pat Porter Active Living Center, provide valuable programs and services to the older adult. We provide programs and services to help older adults maintain their health and independence as long as possible. The more social, recreation, health, information, and lifelong education opportunities there are in the community, the less of a burden there will be on the limited health resources. These are the programs and services that we provide here at the Pat Porter Active Living Center. And thank you, Mayor Gertson, for your words of support and encouragement at our recent fundraising banquet. The city of Steinbach's mission, as stated on the website, is to preserve the quality of life Steinbach is known for. Serving seniors' main goal is to enhance the quality of life of the seniors in Steinbach and surrounding district, and to encourage them to maintain a dignified, independent Our mission and goals are similar, and more importantly, apply to the same demographic. In order for the city of Steinbach to adhere to their mission statement of preserving the quality of life, equitable funding for community groups, including seniors, needs to happen. Quality of life is defined as, quality of life is the general well-being of individuals and societies outlining negative and positive features of life. It observes a life satisfaction, including everything from physical health, family education, employment, wealth, religious beliefs, finance, and the environment. Quality of life should not be confused with the concept of standard of living, which is based primarily on income. Serving seniors' goal of enhancing the quality of life for the older adult is done throughout our programs and services. And some of the services and programs that we provide are socialization and prevention of isolation, such as coffee in our cozy corner, old-time country jam, cards, special events at holiday time, education sessions, such as diabetes, dental, healthcare, or heart care, fraud prevention, and healthy cooking classes. Services such as foot care nurses, mobility equipment loans, lifeline, emergency response information kits, fee-for-service such as cleaning, yard care, snow removal, and hearing clinics. Meals on Wheels, congregant meals and day rest by caregivers. Fitness, such as walking programs, floor purling, pickleball, choir, old-time country dances, and fitness classes. All services are at no charge, except meals and fee-for-service, and all programs are at a token cost. Some important numbers that you should be aware of, or we would like to make you aware of, we have 270 members. It takes over 4,500 volunteer hours to operate the Pat Porter Active Living Center. This does not include the volunteers needed for Meals on Wheels, Circle of Friends, or our resource coordinator. In 1,700 program events, we have almost 11,000 people in attendance, and this, again, is just the Pat Porter Active Living Center programs, and not Meals on Wheels, Circle of Friends, or our resource coordinator. Yes, that's 11,000 participants that rely on us for programs and services. Pat Porter Active Living Center receives 24% of operating cost from Southern Health. That is it. We have no other resource of regular funding. We need to fundraise over $200,000 to operate. Serving Seniors Incorporated allocates 80 hours of staff time, and that's the equivalent of two full-time staff per week to the Pat Porter Active Living Center, our 20,000-square-foot facility. This 80 hours is all of the staff we have. That's for administration, for programs, facility cleaning, facility maintenance. We are staffed to our minimum. To help us raise funds, we rent our facilities out to the public. In 2017, we rented the facility 262 times with approximately 19,000 participants in these rentals. Rental administration must also be done in the 80 hours of staff time. This rental administration takes significant and valuable staff time away from providing programs and services to our seniors. Rentals also require approximately 350 hours of volunteer supervision by the board members. Unfortunately, over the past several years, our fundraising efforts have not offset the rise in expenses and the loss of funders. Excuse me. Most noticeably, the city of Steinbach's grant in lieu of taxes. Over the last three years, the Pat Porter Active Living Center has run in the red to a combined total of $38,572. Our combined property tax bill for the corresponding years was $33,600. To reiterate, in order for the city of Steinbach to adhere to their mission statement of preserving the quality of life, equitable funding for community groups, including seniors, needs to happen. Seniors and the families, friends, and loved ones of seniors strongly urge the city of Steinbach council to rescind or amend the previously adopted motion that allows council to provide grants to select community organizations only. This policy shows favoritism in the guise of fiscal management and does not support the community as a whole. The Pat Porter Active Living Center is formally requesting that the city of Steinbach council approve a yearly grant in lieu of property taxes for our organization. While our organization lods council and administration for good fiscal management, we strongly believe that this should be done in a fair and equitable manner. Thank you for your time today, and we wish you health, happiness, and access to reasonable-funded services in your senior years. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Are there any questions from council to Mr. Enz before he leaves the podium? Any, yeah, Counselor Penner?
Thank you for your presentation. I'm just wondering if you could tell me, is there a membership fee for your members to be a part of it?
Yes, there are membership fees.
Is that number included in the amount you fund, it's actual towards the fundraising total?
Yes.
What is the membership fee a year?
The membership fee is $25 until January, and after that, it's $35. Thirty.
$35.
I got you right there. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Penner? Nothing at this time? Counselor Penner, again.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. True you. The Pat Porter Center is a wonderful place, and I visited last summer, your garden there. And I want you to know that the seniors are very valued members of Steinbach Society, and they are valued by this council as well. I have a question on page 63 of your presentation, or page, I don't know. The mission statement and the funds and data that you provided. You had a rental of the Pat Porter Active Living Center 262 times in 2017.
Yes.
And are your rental rates, are they relative to other rental rates in the community?
We believe they are lower than other facilities, but they're very comparable, but lower.
And do you have any idea of how much of your fundraising is raised through the rentals? Is almost all of it raised through the rentals?
Most of it is done through the rentals and also the fundraising banquets that we had in January. That was our biggest fundraiser.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further questions? Counselor Fair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Do you have any idea, can you tell us what your rental...
Do you have any idea, can you tell us what your rental income would have been, say, in a year, what would be your average rental income for the facility over a year?
No, I don't have that information, so I can't give you the answer.
Can I just clear something?
Yeah, go ahead.
We have different rentals. We have the auditorium we rent.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to say.
We have the auditorium we rent, and then we have the fireside room, and then we have a boardroom. So we have three different rentals.
Yeah, and different fees for each one, I would expect. Okay, thank you. Does that answer your, I know it doesn't fully answer your question, but it answers some of it. Any other questions? All right, well, Mr. Enns, thank you very much for your presentation. Obviously, council does not pass the budget for this year. We do have a longstanding policy, over the last number of years anyway, of what you stated, which is a fairly simplified and focused policy. Obviously, council will take this information, and as we move forward, we'll make a decision on where we head. But we appreciate what you do, we appreciate what your organization does, and obviously, we want to wish you well, and we wish you success. And I understand fully what you're asking, and we will get back to you on that.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council, let's just continue, as the room readjusts here, let's continue with excavator licenses on page 98. We have a motion on page 98. Can I have someone move that, please? Council Seaman, seconded by Council Penner. Any discussion?
Call for the question.
All those in favor. Carried. We will now move to the supplementary tax adjustment cancellations on page 103. Council, you've had a chance to review those as well. There's a motion on the bottom of page 103. Can I have someone make that motion, please? Council Funk, seconded by Council Swagster. Any discussion? Anything further? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. We will now move to the Small Communities Transportation Fund Handy Van Grant Request on page 104. Council, there is a resolution on that. Can I have someone on the top there? Can I have someone move that? Council Fair moves that, seconded by Council Penner. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, yes, it's just the handy van is a very, very important part of the community, and I think it's important that we keep it up in a very good condition, so I think it's a good idea to update it.
Very good. Thank you. Further discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. We will now move to 98, the Small Community Transportation Fund. This is 2018 Neighborhood Sidewalk Program Grant Request on page 104. Also, there's a resolution on the bottom of that page. Council, can I have someone move that, please? Council Swagster, seconded by Council Seaman. Thank you. Council Swagster.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is requesting $50,000 to assist funding our neighborhood sidewalk program, and this is an important program. There are a number of new neighborhoods that need sidewalks, and it's mentioned here, along Linerous Gates, Wrighton Lane, Park Hill Crescent, and hopefully, we can get this funding and we'll help cover a portion of those costs.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything further from council? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor. Carried. Thank you. We're going to now move to our second delegation, and that's Paul Jahal, and I'm going to turn it over to Paul. I know you may have some people that will speak on your behalf as well. So whoever would like to speak, I'll get you to take the podium and state your name and address, and then we'll go from there. I know you also do have a presentation. We also do have some time limitations, but we will be somewhat flexible if within reason.
Paul, let you just introduce yourself first. I'm Paul. We purchased the cab company back in October of 2016, so we've been working with the community, doing as much as we can, and we're on a bit of a predicament right now with the bylaw. So we'd like to, I'm going to ask Scott to continue and explain the situation.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. Scott, if you could state your name and who you work for and presentation.
Yes, his worship. Thank you, councilors, for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Scott McFadden. I am a research government relations regulatory affairs specialist, and I've been retained by Steinbach Taxi to help present tonight. So I've also worked most recently with the Winnipeg Community Taxi Coalition as part of their recent vehicle for hire bylaws, so offer a perspective there, as well as working in the propane industry for a number of years, so have some knowledge and expertise on the regulatory side of the transport of dangerous goods. All of that to say is, I'll be mindful of time. This should take me about five minutes to get through. Hopefully, I'll provide as much clarity as I can, given the circumstances. So, yeah, Paul Jahal is the president of Steinbach Taxi. They employ 17 persons. I'm just going to grab the ticker. Okay, yes. So Steinbach Taxi employs 17 full-time, locally-employed citizens with a 24/7 in-person dispatch for the city of Steinbach. As Paul mentioned, they've made a significant financial impact in the city, purchased a maintenance site and dispatch location recently from the city of Steinbach. Steinbach Taxi are members of the local Chamber of Commerce. They sponsor the transport for the pipe band for the parade, the Steinbach City Parade. They're hosting a fundraiser in March for the Steinbach Arts Council, and employees volunteer for Habitat for Humanity. You know, Steinbach Taxi plays an important role in meeting the transport needs of the great city of Steinbach. This is always the case with these. Where do I have to point backwards? Okay, yeah, here we go. Okay. So, you know, as you're aware, the province on December the 9th passed Bill 30. It's the Vehicle for Hires Act, and Bill 30 passes the responsibility of regulating taxis and vehicles for hire to municipalities on February 28th. So, in essence, the regulatory responsibility lies with the authority that any taxi ride or vehicle for hire originates in. And, you know, this is, to be frank, an important responsibility that the city of Steinbach, you know, now takes on. While time is obviously extremely short, we believe that there is an opportunity to put in place a safe and reasonable regulatory framework for vehicles for hire post February 28th. We have some suggestions. But what we're requesting more than anything else is a partnership with the city of Steinbach. And, you know, we're committed to working to ensure a safe taxi and vehicle for hire service beyond February 28th. We want to provide three perspectives to the, to city council today on our business, and they are as follows. And those three are, one is safety, two is fairness, and I'll dig into this quickly, and three is community. So, you know, safety is paramount to everything that we do. It's safety for our passengers and safety for our drivers. Our drivers are subject to a criminal background check. New drivers must produce a clean driving record with no DUIs or major driving infractions, a zero tolerance policy for any abuse or threats, you know, from passengers or drivers. Vehicles are inspected on a regular basis, and quite simply, we do not allow unsafe vehicles on the road. We want our passengers, which are our children, our parents, the most vulnerable of our society, to arrive at their destination safely. This is our number-one priority. The second principle, I mentioned safety, the second principle is fairness. We believe that the city of Steinbach must seriously consider the principle of fairness when overseeing our industry. In particular, there's two things I just want to bring to your attention. One is the maintenance of the current licensing system. And this is a bit of a complicated issue, but the existing licenses that Steinbach Taxi purchased were purchased under an agreement with the province, under the previous legislation, under the Motor Transport Board. And this, most recently, the city of Winnipeg recognized the licensing agreements for Winnipeg taxi drivers in recent deliberations there. And the licensing in Winnipeg is forever and transferable, so basically meaning that, you know, once you have this license, you have a vehicle, you can in turn sell or transfer that license from one individual to another. So it actually creates a value of the taxi business. So, from our perspective, fairness is important because we entered into this agreement with the province, not really knowing where any of this was going to go. And so, as is the case with Winnipeg, we're just asking that the, on an interim basis, the current licensing system be maintained. Fairness, again, a second sort of sub-point under fairness is illegal ride sharing. And I know everyone is aware of Uber, so I just want you to be on the watch for illegal ride sharing. So, you know, this includes Facebook ride groups. The point that I want to make is, if there's an exchange of money between a passenger and a driver, it is a vehicle for hire. So there's insurance implications, there's Motor Vehicle Act implications. For you, if the ride originates in Steinbach, the regulatory authority lies within the city, and this is outlined in Bill 30. And certainly, enforcement is going to be a challenge for you. So you see these Facebook ride groups that pop up. If there's an exchange of cash, they're legal. As with Winnipeg, you know, in the case of Operation Red Nose, and here, that is allowable because proceeds from those fares go to a not-for-profit. So that is something that is actually allowed. So our request is that fairness is recognized for all vehicles for hire, and that the city do watch out for any issues that may arise with ride sharing. The third principle and final principle that we're speaking about today is the sense of the community, that taxi, that Steinbach Taxi, the sense of community that Steinbach Taxi contributes to Steinbach. It's hard work. You know, many drivers work Friday and Saturday nights, they're away from family. You know, we're citizens that pay taxes, we're law-abiding, we're creating a better life for our families. You know, many of our drivers have university degrees, and all of our, many, if not almost all of our children are enrolled in post-secondary schools. We provide a needed service to those who cannot drive themselves, to the disabled seniors, vulnerable, and, you know, we pick you up when there's an emergency, we help you with your groceries, and we make sure you get home safely. Kind of the next points on community, and we're just about at the end here, is, you know, we drive in all conditions. When it's colder than Mars, we're on the road. You know, we take pride in the customer service that we provide for people, and we understand that we are the face of Steinbach to tourists and visitors in many cases. And so, as a consequence, every new driver does receive 16 hours of customer service training at the start of their job. We have two handy vans on the road at all times, and our drivers have accessibility training, so helping someone get in and out of a vehicle, which is complicated when it comes to managing someone in a wheelchair. And we're willing to expand handy transit services and other specialty services to meet the needs of the great city of Steinbach. So, in conclusion, you know, we're seeking a partnership. We want to ensure after February 28th that there's a smooth transition to a new regulatory regime, no interruptions whatsoever, and we go as far as to offer the city our time and expertise on a working group to fine-tune any regulations. Our lawyer did provide the following advice. I'm not going to read it word for word, but basically, that it's possible for the city of Steinbach to put in place an interim bylaw with respect to vehicles for hire. This is more specific to the licensing, but the bylaw could simply contain provisions to recognize licensing previously granted under the provincial legislation, again, as was the case in Winnipeg. For the taxi industry, the recognition of licensing really is very important. There's insurance implications. Manitoba Public Insurance Corporation actually requires some documentation from the city of Steinbach in order to ensure. Our vehicles are insured until March of 2019, so we actually don't have an issue with March the 1st of 2018, but beyond that, there's going to be some potential issues.
And in the end, right, if there's an issue with vehicles getting into an accident, we need to replace a vehicle, I don't have anything anymore after March 1st in hand that says I can go and register another taxi. It's, what I have is only valid up to February 28th. So even if we can come up with something that gives me the authority I already previously had, the companies had for the last 20 years, we can just continue with something like that, so we can continue to have proper insurance for the cab company and limo company and all that.
You know, and just in terms of, like, follow-up conversations, you know, we're prepared to connect the city of Steinbach, you probably are already there, but, you know, with the city of Winnipeg official, Dave Wardrop, who's the chief transportation officer, with Ward Keith, who's the vice president at Manitoba Public Insurance Corporation, who can help navigate, you know, some of the complexities in terms of the insurance requirements, as well as other cities like Thompson and Brandon. And you'll notice that every city has a varying degree of regulations when it comes to taxis. You know, we want the highest possible standard of safety. It's one thing that, you know, these new business owners have spent a lot of money on new vehicles, and the reason for that is they want safe vehicles. And really, that's all we have. We can answer questions.
Thank you. There may be a number of questions from around the table. Council Seaman, first of all.
Thank you. Could we go back to your statement? The last item, it says, "The bylaw could simply contain provisions..."
Oh, sorry. Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, Council Seaman. Yes.
"That all licensing authorities previously granted under the city of Steinbach." That's incorrect. The city of Steinbach, I should say, province of Manitoba.
Yeah, you know, and I apologize. We will send an updated version with that.
Just for clarity, though.
Yeah.
I do have one further question, though. So what happens if the city of Steinbach does nothing?
I mean, you'd be in a situation where, you know, there is a, I'm not a lawyer, but, you know, you have a legal obligation under Bill 30.
That, okay. We don't have that, we would like to get that opinion, I think.
Yeah, and most certainly, you know, and again, I'll encourage you to have conversations specifically with Minister Wharton and his office and officials to get any clarity on that. But, yeah, the concern, of course, is that if they're in the absence of any regulations, well, anything could go.
Okay, thank you. Just for a point, to not lose that point, I'm going to ask Ms. Dundas, just to, she has one comment she'd like to make.
I actually do have a copy of Bill 30 here, and Section 3.1 says, "This is for general bylaw-making authorities from municipalities other than Winnipeg," and it states, "Section 3.1, the council of a municipality may make bylaws under the Municipal Act for the purpose of regulating the vehicle-for-hire industry, including vehicles-for-hire and vehicle-for-hire businesses." So again, it says "may," not Winnipeg section says "must."
Okay, thank you. Council Swagster, you had a question.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to ask, it's not often we have a business requesting that we regulate them. My question is, is that, following up on Council Seaman's question, that, you know, if we don't pass a bylaw, which we're not required to do, presumably, could you not just, could you just not continue operating your taxis the same way you have before? What is the reason that we have to do this? And that sort of extends beyond just your business.
I think that there's a principle of fairness that applies here. So, you know, if you look at the issue of taxi licenses, and then following the example of the city of Winnipeg, who recently deliberated this, and they recognize that there is a value and importance in having those licenses. For Steinbach Taxi, they entered into agreement that was changed by the province under Bill 30, and in the case of Steinbach specifically, there were 15 licenses issued for the city of Steinbach, in addition to...
Whether they're all municipalities, but we propose to Steinbach.
Right. And so that agreement, when the business was purchased in October of 2016... And so that agreement, when the business was purchased in October of twenty-sixteen, was in place with the understanding that there was going to be the recognition of the licensing. So really, the licensing is the main thing. Everyone is still going to be subject to the Motor Vehicle Act. They're still going to be subject to having to purchase proper insurance. But, and sorry, and just bear with me because I'm having to kind of talk this out. You know, in the case of the city of Steinbach, which does not have public transport, the taxi service provides an important service, and the value of the business is linked with the taxi licenses. So to walk away from the regulatory responsibility would be blatantly unfair to these established business owners.
Follow-up.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you're, basically, the emphasis here is on the number of licenses, fifteen licenses. Are you basically saying you want us to limit the number of taxis available and reduce the options available to people? Because it sounds like, because of all the safety, because you made all these points about safety, and all the safety regulations remain in place, and now we're just talking about number of licenses, it sounds like this is a request to limit competition. Is that not the case?
Look, we believe in the free market. We believe in the principle of competition, provided that competition is fair. And look, we, Steinbach Taxi did not choose for the province to bring in Bill thirty. And, you know, in other circumstances, if property is expropriated from citizens due to a change in law, they're usually entitled to compensation, which we're not asking for at all. We're asking for that the agreement that Steinbach Taxi entered into in respect to the licenses is maintained. And, and on an interim, on an interim basis, until such time as, you know, the city of Steinbach maybe looks at it a little bit deeper. And just my follow-up point on that is Myers-Norris-Penny investigated this exact issue when it came to the city of Winnipeg in twenty-fifteen. And they, they recommended a certain ratio of taxi licenses per population. And with the fifteen taxi licenses issued, we're well within that recommended ratio. As well, there's nothing preventing someone from starting a rideshare company in Steinbach. That is completely allowable. That would be above and beyond the taxi licenses. So it actually wouldn't be a limit on the number of people that would be providing a vehicle-for-hire service.
Counselor Penner.
Did you have to pay for the licenses?
So I'm going to just, so I'll let Paul speak to that.
We didn't pay for the licenses.
How much does a license cost? Or did it cost you under the provincial legislation?
We bought the company about over half, half a million.
Not the company, but the licenses? Not the capital?
The licenses, we bought everything actually in one, with the licenses and the vehicles and basically the operation. But the major cost of it was pushed towards the value of the license. So, Avi, it's not, you know...
So if I were to go to the city of Winnipeg and want to buy a license, how much would they charge for a license?
I think it's somewhere around one hundred and fifty thousand at this point.
For license?
For license. They are giving out new licenses, sixty new licenses.
So when...
But those, sorry, and I'll just add, those licenses are non-transferable, that the city is adding. So they actually have less of a value because you can't in turn sell that license to someone else or transfer. It's, it's, this is, to be honest, it's a peculiar part of the marketplace. You know, if you Google taxi medallion, you'll see, you know, taxi medallions in other cities have, you know, sell for five hundred thousand. In New York City, they sell for a million dollars.
Okay, so if we...
There's a value to it. Yes.
We could charge, the city of Steinbach could charge a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a license? I mean, that's a great generator for us if we go that way.
No, so... Sorry, Counselor Penner. The license is owned, the license is an application that Steinbach Taxi would make to the city of Steinbach. The cost of the actual paper transaction is, you know, I believe in the city of Winnipeg, it's six hundred dollars for that transaction. But the license is attached to that vehicle and to that business owner. And when they go to sell that business, that is transferable, and therefore has a value to it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Clear as mud. I can see the confusion. It is a very confusing marketplace.
Just before, any other questions on this side? Counselor Farr, and then Counselor Swachter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It seems to me that this is a very complex issue, and the city of Winnipeg has a certain bylaws, and now the province is telling us that we're supposed to regulate it, or they're suggesting to regulate it. And the province lately, it seems that they give us very little time to react. They make a decision, and then we're supposed to react to it instantaneously. And you know that's not possible to do, because...
Yes.
...pass a bylaw like this here, it would take more than the time that you indicated you could.
Yes.
So I think that this is something that we will need to think through, and it's going to be something that we're going to have to wade through the waters, and it sounds to me like it's not necessarily that we have to do this, but that we may do this. So I think it's, I think we need a lot more research on this before we move on. That would be my opinion.
Thank you. Counselor Swachter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just going back to sort of the fairness point here, my understanding is that there is another company that is offering a taxi service in Steinbach. Is that company also requesting that we regulate them? Is this, have you been working in partnership to request this regulation?
So my understanding is that other company is actually not based out of Steinbach.
But it provides services within Steinbach?
It provides services within Steinbach. So, you know, again, under Bill thirty, you know, please understand that if the fare, where the fare originates is where it needs to be regulated from. So they can operate, and certainly, again, competition, you know, not being opposed to monopolies, they can operate in this marketplace. If they're picking up fares, so just so you know, if they're picking up fares in the city of Steinbach, you have a responsibility to oversee them, or you may have a responsibility to oversee.
Are they requesting we regulate them? Are they agreeing with your request?
You would have to talk to them yourselves, but they're in the adjoining municipality.
Thank you. Counselor Siemens, please.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Further question is that, that you haven't addressed at this point, is enforcement.
Yeah.
And where is it that, or how does it work, number one? I'd be very confused if I would get a call at home telling me that somebody picked up the wrong fare somewhere. Who would we, how would the city ever start to enforce something like that?
Yeah, so, you know, enforcement is definitely going to be a challenge. It's a challenge in this new world, particularly when it comes to kind of Facebook rideshare and Bill thirty. You know, my suggestion is that we don't have all the answers today, that, you know, there are some potential interim measures in terms of recognizing, you know, the licensing for the taxis, but that we are open to further discussions with council and administration on the finer points. So, on the enforcement. And, you know, what I will say is that, yes, it's definitely rare for a company to come in to government and ask to be regulated. For all intents and purposes, right now, we are self-regulating. And I would suggest that we've done quite a good job, because you'd be reading about us in the papers if there's accidents or incidents. It's a partnership that we need to establish with one another. Enforcement kind of goes both ways. So, you know, we see on the road every day, you know, things, if we're seeing illegal Facebook ride-groups out there, you know, we would work with you. In the case of the city of Winnipeg, their, you know, their fees and fines are set up in a revenue-neutral, so I'm kind of jumping ahead here, in a revenue-neutral sort of way, which will help the cost of enforcement. You know, given the fact that, you know, and I don't want to dig too deep into the cost of enforcement, sure, there's going to be a cost, but there's also an opportunity to gain back some of that revenue through the licensing fees, fines, et cetera.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? So if I could just clarify, so basically, the first request is to, for us to maintain the licensing system that's in place, basically transferred over to the city. Am I to understand that the basic benefit to that will be to maintain the fairness of what was paid for it originally? Is that what I'm, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, yes. And I would go as far as to say that, you know, it is in the interest of the city of Steinbach to have a healthy and sustainable taxi industry. You know, you don't have public transport in the city, so without that service, and I'm not saying the service will fall away, but with no regulatory framework, with competition coming in that won't be regulated while we are regulated, we need to have kind of a deeper discussion on that. So, part one is recognizing the existing licenses, and then part two is working out some of the finer details. And, yeah, that's basically it.
Very good. Any other, one final comment? Any other comments from council or questions? Thank you for your time. What we will do, of course, is council will ask administration to give us a small report. They'll be looking at this, they already have been looking at this briefly, and we'll ask them for a report back to council, where council can choose to take action or not. So we will get back to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. I'll leave the last word to you, Paul.
Sure. I guess what I'm trying to answer is if there's some kind of a dollar amount attached to taxi industry, it does give an incentive to actually run the business, and instead of everybody just playing the peak hours, it doesn't make sense for the other guy to operate twenty-four hours if he's not making enough money to support the business. Second is, you know, how we're insured and regulated, how the Steinbach Taxi has been running for the last twenty years, insured with MPI and properly insured. That is another thing I wanted to, is a concern that after, you know, March first, if there's nothing there, do I have something, something from around the Transport Board that guaranteed to get insurance from MPI? I don't see anything from them now, basically. Just like you said, they're cutting us off right in the twenty-eighth, and good luck after that, right, between you and Steinbach. So we, I haven't approached any of the municipalities that we were registered with in the past. I've come straight to the city of Steinbach, because I'm hoping to grow out of the city of Steinbach, so...
Thank you.
Just one last thing is, and also that, you know, again, you know, it's rare businesses come asking to be regulated, but we actually view this as a welcome change from being regulated by the province kind of way up here. We're actually able to see you face-to-face, and that actually makes a big difference to us. We think this will be painless. But your administrative report, I think, will shed some light on the impact for you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
As far as revenue, like Scott here mentioned, that every year, we renew permits. In the city of Winnipeg, they pay six dollars a permit. We were renewing the permits with the Transport Board each separate permit that we had, whether it was taxi or limo, we were paying revenue to them. So, you know, on the revenue cost, it doesn't change much on our side to contribute, we're not contributing to the province anymore for the paperwork, contributing to the city of Steinbach, which we'd rather do when we're operating out of here, right? So...
Yeah, we'd rather pay you than the province.
Good. Thank you very much.
You're here.
Thank you. We will get back to you in due course. Obviously, the timeline is somewhat shifted, and, but obviously, we'll get our report and then move forward from there. Thank you. All right, we will now move to nine I, and that's the New Building Canada Small Communities Fund. This is on page one oh five. Council, you've had some time to review this. This is a deadline extension request. Can I have someone move this, please? Counselor Siemens, second by Counselor Penner. Any discussion?
Through you, or to you, Mr. Mayor, is, we have, the New Building Canada Fund has had different deadlines, very short deadlines in some cases. And so this is a request for the city to ask for continuation till March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, because there is, it does take a lot of time to put all the information together.
Thank you. Further discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carrie. We'll now move to questions of council. Any questions of council? Seeing none, we'll now move to correspondence and petitions. This is on eleven A. We have the Arm of Saint Anne in regards to SARS support on page one oh six.
You're the only one that can speak to it, Mr. Mayor.
Pardon me?
You're the only one that can speak to that experience.
Obviously, it's an interesting experience. But obviously, we do recognize SARS as an important piece of what, of our healthcare emergency service, and there are more and more, especially in the southeast, they've been being used, and they certainly do save lives. But we'll take that as information for now. We'll now move to eleven B, the municipality of Emerson Franklin, in regards to their event.
Well, you won one trophy in Winnipeg. We have to say you have another.
Sometimes you cut your losses, and you know when to quit, eh? We'll take that as information for now. There's no other business. I'll have a motion adjourned, please. Counselor Penner, second by Counselor Siemens. Any discussion, no discussion, all those in favor. Carrie, thank you.